The city of Bristol, providing beautiful parks, economic development, and a family-friendly community.
Board meeting and ask that you stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the great public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to ask the members of the Joint Board to introduce themselves to the public starting on my far right.
John Smith, Port of Finance.
Mike Lamoth, Port of Finance.
Orlando Kelfi, Board of Finance.
Derek Chencheluski, Board of Finance.
Mike Ferney, Board of Finance.
Greg Hahn, City Council.
Mary Fortier, City Council.
Dave Proleski, City Council.
Cheryl Tebow, Board of Finance.
Ron Burns, Board of Finance.
Jake Carrier, Board of Finance.
Dave Mills, City Council.
And I'm Ellen Zappo-Sassu, Mayor. The first item on our agenda is the approval of the minutes of the regular Joint Board meeting from November 14, 2017. Is there a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Discussion or questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. The next item is the consent calendar consisting of seven items that I will ask our city clerks.
Two A is to make an additional appropriation of $5,000 within the special grants and donations fund funded by a donation for the adventures and peacemaking program. Two B is to make an additional appropriation of $154,800 within the special grants and donations fund for the 2018 comprehensive DUI enforcement grant funded by grant revenue. Two C is to transfer $376,000 within the capital projects fund for Fire Station 4 renovations. Two D is to transfer $11,500 within the water pollution control capital and nonrecurring fund. Two E is to make an additional appropriation of $11,500 within the sewer operating and assessment fund for the purchase of a crane truck. Two F is to transfer $50,000 within the community development block grant fund for the sidewalk replacement program. And two G is to transfer $230,395 within the general fund for the local 773 contract settlement.
Through the chair. I'd like to pull item F, please, for discussion.
Certainly. Any other items from the consent calendar that the members would like pulled for further discussion? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar omitting F at this time.
Move approval, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. You have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, I know this came up on our Board of Finance and it was approved there unanimously. But I've been looking, you know, I look back again at this because I've seen some questions from some citizens and dove back to when we did this before, which is basically to finish a project. But there are some clear agreements and I had some discussions with Justin Mally, who I took my glasses off, so I don't... Oh, there you are, okay. And so I'd like to have a dialogue and I think it would be wise for us to think about this because the Charter does say that taxpayers and residents and homeowners are responsible for the sidewalks in front of their homes. And so with that in one hand and with the worthiness of this project that it is going to be invested in lower-income neighborhoods where there's a lot of people and a lot of walkers and people who benefit from this and so it's worthy in that respect. I'm drawn to balancing, you know, the weight of both items and that maybe it's something that we should consider that there be a special kind of program, maybe if it's in front of a single-family homeowner that is having, you know, is low income or something. But I'm struggling more with landlords because landlords purchase this property to invest for a return. And so I see the struggle of both ends. So, Justin, if you want to add to this and add some color, again, I think it's a great idea, but I'm tripped up on the Charter. So I felt it would be wise to have discussion.
I think maybe I could just add a little bit on where the BDA comes from on this and HUD and leave it up to you all.
Thank you.
Essentially, through our CDBG program, HUD has identified two... We've identified and then HUD has approved two target areas, we call them, within the city of Bristol for directed CDBG investments. CDBG, again, is Community Development Block Grant Funds. Those funds are directed to assist low and moderate income people in the city and we do that in a number of ways. We have our housing rehab program that is so successful. It's a successful program for us. So we help folks who live in their homes fix their roofs, their HVAC systems, windows. Those folks have to meet income guidelines. Another way that we help low and moderate income folks in the community is assisting a lot of our social service agencies with projects and programs. And then another way we do it is targeting neighborhoods for investment. And in this case, the Board has chosen to look at infrastructure investment, specifically sidewalks within those areas. So, you know, funds have dwindled year over year with CDBG funds and the Board has looked at, you know, what is the most that we can do? What is the best that we can do with our limited funds? And they've considered sidewalk funds as a good investment because it generally helps the entire neighborhood, right? So folks who are traversing the sidewalks, I think it is like a broken window theory. You know, new sidewalks look better and that good things happen.
I agree.
It's kind of like, you know, I wear my CDBG hat, but I wear my economic development hat too. In economic development, we have programs, incentive programs designated for certain areas of the city, right? So Enterprise Zone and downtown often receive those programs. Other areas don't, you know, Route 6 maybe, or other areas just don't. It's not as difficult to develop in those areas. So it's not the same, but we look at the West End and Summer Street and HUD does as an area that sort of, if you're going to pick an area in the city, those are the areas that we can direct those investments so that the entire neighborhood may benefit.
And as I agree, I think it's a great program. I just think it would be good because if one citizen has a question, several do. But on the other hand, there's the Charter and that, again, is where it was struggling.
Through the chair. I'm not sure, Cheryl, exactly what your objection is. I understand what the Charter says about sidewalks, that we are respons... You know, the Charter actually says that homeowners, including absentee landlord homeowners, are responsible for the sidewalks in front of their property. But we also have programs through Public Works. If I want to repair the sidewalk in front of my house, I can call Public Works and get on a schedule with them and I'm paying for a portion of that and I can take loans from the city to pay for another portion. So I don't see the difference between taking some funds outright and repairing sidewalks in a given neighborhood that is probably more needy than others. I just don't understand. In other words, I don't think the Charter precludes any assistance from anywhere helping someone with their sidewalks just because legally the tenant is responsible for the sidewalk... I mean, the owner is responsible for the sidewalk.
Well, to that, I'd say there's a big difference between outright doing somebody's sidewalk without an expectation of a payback of a loan. So there is a very distinct difference in that respect, Mary. Again, how do you tell a taxpayer that is struggling and their sidewalk's bad and they don't have the funds? And that's the crux of the problem. Again, I think it's great and I understand your points and I think they're all valid. But it is a valid question.
Through the chair, you know, this has come up quite often, my experience with the BDA. And the question is, why are we helping people who may have the ability to help themselves? And I think the distinguishing part is that these are target areas for targeted investment. And that's the difference. I mean, if we're helping improve a neighborhood that has been targeted by us for improvement, for whatever the reason may be, I think that is the distinguishing characteristic. And that if someone is a beneficiary of that, who might be able to afford that, well, good luck. You know, that's just part of, I think, the... That is factored into when we identify a target area, am I right?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, the idea is, again, the... We like the idea of infrastructure and being able to have an effect there.
But this has come up before in our BDA discussions, always, over the last years.
Absolutely, the BDA appreciates the question. And it's just a situation where, in order to benefit the whole, sometimes it's not, there's a little gray area there. And sometimes it's not always perfect and cut and dry. But the end result is what the BDA is looking for on that.
To the chair, I have a... I think that Cheryl's got a valid point here, at least in terms of the absentee landlords. And frankly, I don't know why we as a city are not treating them more like businesses rather than residences. Because I think by us picking up those costs because they fall into the BDA's purview, I think that we're essentially picking up their business costs. And I'm not in favor of that. I understand if someone owns the home and they're, you know, they live in it and, you know, income is difficult, okay, that's one thing. But when this person, when a person owns the property as a business, that's a business expense. And there's no reason we should be picking that up whole, 100%. If that's the case, then they should be out of business.
If I may, just one more point. As someone who sits on the Disability Commission here, we talk about the sidewalks in some of these poorer neighborhoods quite a lot. We have people that use wheelchairs and other motorized scooters and have difficulties traversing and getting where they need to get to get groceries, to get prescriptions, all kinds of real needs. So while we might be benefiting someone who we think maybe doesn't deserve it, we're also benefiting people that wholeheartedly deserve and need to have safe sidewalks. We have ancient sidewalks in this city and I'm in favor of expanding our sidewalk programs in general and encouraging more sidewalk repairs and sidewalk repairs with city monies if necessary.
Move it, Chair.
Yes.
You've opened a camp of worms.
This is a good thing, this is a good discussion. And I sort of have to agree with Mr. Lamoth. That, again, and I also agree with Ms. Fortier. Why can't we offer loans to those investors in those properties versus an outright grant to fix those sidewalks? And then if they still choose not to do it, don't we have code enforcement?
Exactly.
Yeah, so...
Carrot stick.
The loan piece is, you know, that's a vehicle that the BDA is considering. Loans bring up a lot of sort of other issues and we don't necessarily... For a sidewalk project, when you're doing tens of, you know, into the 20, different sections, it gets to be owners dealing with each section and property individually. Not to say we couldn't do it. I think that these are all good policy questions, right? And to bring those concerns, I'll defer to the mayor, but to bring those questions, concerns to the BDA is absolutely, that's why we're here, right? So these are not things that we haven't heard before, the Board hasn't heard before. The Board sort of chosen to go in one direction, but that's why we have Board and Commissions and...
Yeah, and it won't be all south tonight.
No.
But it's something that fruits a thought.
Anybody else from the panel have anything they'd like to add? So what I would just like to add to wrap up the conversation is, one, it is on the Joint Board, which means it's gone through the committee process and the Board of Finance and is now here. It is a policy that's in place and has been in place for several years for the targeted investment piece. That does not preclude us from having these conversations, but we're also not sitting here tonight as a policy board. So per Charter, I think it's important to remember that. The other thing is, we have a couple of options. We can send as a communication to the BDA because that policy committee will be taking up this, probably within the next six weeks or so, that there's an interest from the Board of Finance in order to have this dialogue. So that would be one suggested motion that I would, I'll put out there. The larger vision one is that for all of these items that we come up with, Charter revision is a place that I think we need to talk about some of this because some of these items are just not well-placed. So having a conversation about who repairs their sidewalks in Charter is not appropriate. And again, has been an amalgamation of years of how things happen. So a referral to the Charter revision would be appropriate as well. But as someone who is, has been involved in the CDBG process, both as someone who has applied for funds for nonprofits and also in a professional capacity, I think we do have to understand that one of the reasons that we've done this is because HUD is looking for us to do certain things and to accomplish certain things. And the census tracts that are being targeted, specifically the West End and the Summer Street, census tracts, when you lift them up and look at the census map and there's numbers attached to them, those numbers compare directly to the income within those neighborhoods. So this is a science and it's not something I think that tonight we're going to get to the bottom of. But if the Chairwoman of the Board of Finance would like to make one or two or any other motions, now would be the time to do so.
Thank you, Mayor. And I would, you know, we're not going to be doing sidewalks in the next few months anyway, so there is time really for this to go back to policy and be, you know, at least do that. So I would like to make that recommendation that we send this back to the policy board for those kind of discussion items. And then also, I'll... Should I do them one at a time, Therese?
Let's do them one at a time. So is there a second to the motion to refer this matter to the BDA and the CDBG Policy Subcommittee? Okay, any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries. And is there a second motion that you'd like to make?
Yes, I would also think it would be a great time for the Charter Reform Committee to look at the issue of sidewalk repairs.
Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion on the motion to refer to the Charter Revision Commission that will be formed later tonight, the matter of language pertaining to sidewalk maintenance? Okay, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Thank you, Justin. Therese, do you want to carry on with the following agenda items, please?
To transfer $8,386 from the general fund contingency account to operating transfers out special revenue.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item four, to make an additional appropriation of $16,772 within the special grants and donations fund for the 2017 Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant.
Move approval?
Second.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess I'll ask for discussion since I forgot. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item five, to transfer $25,000 within the Community Development Block Grant Fund for a small business grant program.
Move approval?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item six, to transfer $10,500 from the general fund contingency account to St. Vincent de Paul to maintain 419 West Street.
Second.
Discussion?
Sure. Is everybody aware of the background behind this as a council? Because I know we were, the Finance Board was apprised of it. If not, would somebody like to discuss? Cheryl?
Sure, you know, this is for the property, I think it's called the Elms, if I'm saying that correctly, at 419 West Street. And apparently this house, you know, was part of a shelter program that has been basically boarded up for a couple of years. There is an agreement that goes back several years ago that has kind of some language to the effect that should this cease to be a functioning shelter, the city is responsible to refund to the state of Connecticut about $850,000. So basically what's happening with this program is St. Vincent de Paul is working with the Crystalis Center out of Hartford. They've applied to transfer this property for the use, again, for homeless veterans, which is a very noble cause, I think we all support that. The problem is with the state budget, the funding for this program was greatly delayed. They're highly anticipating that come March, these funds will start to hopefully materialize. And if that's the case, then some of the risk is mediated for a while. But I mean, that 850 doesn't go away, it doesn't depreciate even though this agreement's almost 20 years old. So a couple of things that we felt was important is to have a corp counsel work on, seeing if we can get some language structured with the state to relieve us of that obligation to which the Board of Finance voted on and that's in the works, as well as a few other items. But that's basically the history there, so there is some great risk, but we're working on it. But I think the big thing is, is hopefully this will be used for the transitional housing or the veterans' housing, which has a very noble cause and ultimately that's what we all want to see to come to fruition. Any questions? Thank you.
Okay, does everybody understand now the motion for the $10,500 and why it's a pretty good deal right now?
A pretty good investment, I'd say.
Okay, before that explanation, did we have a motion and a second?
There was a motion, yes.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item seven, monthly revenue and expense report by the controller.
Good evening, everyone. I don't have too much to report tonight. You do have the report in front of you. Just a couple of things that, you know, the tax revenues are coming in as expected. We're actually at 55.8% on the current revenues, 52.4% from the prior and then 43.1% for interest and lien fees. The one thing I will report, this is the time of the year that the supplemental motor vehicle tax bills go out. And I looked at the numbers earlier this afternoon and it looks like the collections on that will probably come in at around $1.5 million. And I think we had budgeted about $1 million. So I think we can anticipate some sort of a surplus on the supplemental motor vehicle taxes. Again, it's early, they didn't go out yet, but assuming we collect at the same rate that we had in the past few years, we should have, generate some surplus funds there to help make up for some of the state revenues that we have lost over this, the past few months. With regard to the state budget update, the only update that's different from the last time we met, the governor did reduce what the grants by $250,000. That grant was to help offset the renters rebate program that we had talked about last month. And it is anticipated that that reduction will come off of the Alliance Grant at this point, so, you know, we'll keep watching that. One other thing, just to let you do, let you know that we did receive the municipal stabilization grant of $429,000. That was in the final budget, so the monies are coming in in accordance with the adopted budget. And we have received our ECS funding at the end of October. So we're getting the funds that were promised to us in the state budget. With regard to expenditures on the city side, not too much to report there. You did have some funding requests earlier that you did approve. And just an update with regard to the Board of Education, they are continuing with the Board of Finance and we do have a Subcommittee meeting tomorrow. So that is something that we are monitoring as we go throughout the year. So other than that, I don't really have too much else unless somebody has any specific questions on anything.
Questions? Okay, thank you. The last item is any other business. Do any of the commissioners on Joint Board have any other business they'd like to bring forward? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, motion carries, we are adjourned and we will begin the City Council meeting at 7:15. The meeting of the City Council. I'd like to ask those who are able, who are in the audience to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance to start our meeting. Would the members of the City Council please introduce themselves starting on my far right?
Peter Kelly, Second District.
Greg Hahn, First District.
Mary Fortier, District Three.
Dave Proleski, Second District.
Dave Mills, District Three.
And Josh... Josh Maderos, representing Council One, will be late tonight. He is being introduced to the Cheshire Town Council as part of his new responsibilities as Park Department Director in that town. So he'll be joining us shortly. I am Ellen Zappo-Sassu, the mayor. And at this time, I would like to ask for a moment of silence and reflection. Today, we are mourning the loss of Connor Albert, who is a fifth grader at Southside School. And also, this is also the week of the fifth anniversary of the Newtown tragedy. And I think with so much of that centered on young people and the focus of what we try to do here, bettering our community for the future, it really hits home and I think that a moment of reflection in terms of what the loss of life, especially in such young people, means to a community, especially one such as Newtown, which I know is still struggling to this day, would be in order. So I invite you to join me, thank you. Thank you. We'll now proceed to our regular agenda, which, while our city clerk is receiving, is getting the public participation, I will ask the City Council for their approval of a group of meeting minutes. They include the regular City Council meeting on November 14, 2017, and the special City Council meetings on October 16, 2017, October 19, 2017, October 30, 2017, and November 30, 2017.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on any of the minutes presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And for the record, I will be abstaining on the minutes from October 16, October 19, and October 30, as will Councilmen Kelly and Hahn. Okay, thank you. For public participation tonight, we have one member of the public signed up. If any of you are new to our meeting and did not realize there is a sign-up sheet and wish to speak, if you would just move to the back of the room and you can speak after Mr. Dudco from 116 Lewis Road. Ed?
You know, the goal is always to get you to chuckle. You know, I'm a jokester, but hey, I didn't go to top 100 university and get a dean's list so many times because I'm stupid, all right? And I hope Mark Hap beats profit. Well, anyways, happy holidays to all. Okay, I guess Merry Christmas for Christians. Happy Hanukkah for those of the Jewish faith. Muslims, they're gonna have to wait until May for Ramadan. But I hope it's gonna be a happy New Good Year for all. And I know you're gonna take Memorial Boulevard and put it to Board of Education. I think that's good because maybe you'll get state funding. I don't know how much money they got over there at the state, but maybe that's a good move. I mean, there's nothing to do in Bristol. Like I said it before, there's not even a movie theater here. I mean, what is my social life, going to Sporty's on a Friday night for two hours?
There's nothing wrong with that.
I see your faces there. I see your face there, but I mean, but I'm sick of it. I mean, I was gonna go to some venue, it was the Ridgefield Playhouse. And I said, what do I want to drive an hour and a half for? And, you know, it's down there in Fairfield County. And then I look up its history, it's only got 500 seats. 500 seats? I mean, Memorial Boulevard schools got more than that. I'm opposed to ripping out any seats. I mean, the more fanatics you could put in a seat, the more money you're gonna get per venue, the lesser the tickets will probably cost. I mean, in the Ridgefield Playhouse was an old high school auditorium, all right? That's the same thing we got. I mean, like I said before, don't start new projects, let's finish the ones we got. I mean, Ridgefield Playhouse, of course, it's a nonprofit, it's a 501, let's see, three. And then I looked at somebody's acts they had. I mean, they had Joan Baez, they had Greg Allman, they had Clint Black, they had the Doobie Brothers, they had Brian Wilson, they had a symposium on movies with Ron Howard, Harvey Keitel, Barry Levinson. They had comics there, they had Martin Short, Dana Carvey, Jackie Mason, Joan Rivers, Kathy Griffin, Robert Klein, Ron White. Why can't we do that here? And you know, I don't want to see another thing in Bristol where a project goes on for years and years, 10 years, a decade, you know, get it done. And you know, the last thing I asked for, and I've done this June, July, August, September, I laid off during election season in October. I went last month, now today. You know, I'm asking for that plaque. You know, we always stand up, we do the Pledge of Allegiance and you say, "Liberty and Justice for All." And I think, well, what happened to my family? What the hell liberty and justice did I get? And I always say this, you want to call yourself all... I mean, I went to a BDA meeting where he said, well, my family did was bad behavior. That wasn't bad behavior. That wasn't bad behavior. Where the old BDA director said about a council member, he wished he had a gun. Of course, he was fired. He was fired. And what's he walk away with? He walks away with a half a million dollars. I'm not wrong. I am not wrong. Hey, look. Christmas is coming. I'm gonna make my naughty and nice list. I want Bristol to be on, I could put it on the, on the naughty list pretty easy. You know, before my mother turns ninety-three in April, I think that's a decent thing to do. Look, I'm willing to work for the community. Maybe I'll write you. You can put me on a committee, like, if it's not too many hours a month, okay? I'd do that. You know, I'm, I'm gonna work at the soup kitchen on Christmas Day. I want a plaque.
So, to that end, is my understanding that over the course of the last year, the BDA declined the plaque language? Were you on that during that time, Councilman Perleski?
I, I was. What the BDA Board chose to do was rather than to entertain a specific request from Mr. Dudko to do a general policy on plaques.
And is that in process?
I think it's been voted upon. Justin, it was voted by the Board, as I remember it was.
Thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience that was unaware of our policy and would like to address the City Council that did not sign up? Okay. So, hearing none, I'm gonna ask the indulgence of the City Council, I would like to ask our city assessor, Tom DiNoto, to come forward to give a very brief synopsis overview of the recent assessment letters that went out to the city. Many of us have received phone calls, and it's also a very weighty issue in terms of valuation, commercial versus residential. Certain, certain neighborhoods increased in value, certain neighborhoods decreased in value. And I think that there was a lot of confusion across the board from a lot of people. And I thought that it might be beneficial, since we do have Nutmeg TV here with us tonight, for anybody who might be watching to get a little bit of an understanding of, of what that process entailed.
Definitely. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council members. To take a periphery view of everything that's happened in the last five years, I think that a common understanding that in the two thousand and twelve revaluation, we came out of the Great Recession. And financing, employment statistics, things of that nature, transactions that were still occurring in the marketplace were weighted down by the Great Recession that peaked in two thousand and ten. So, from those statistics, when we look and we jump forward five years, and we take into consideration that federal policy right now, with Fed funds, fund rates, is taking a keener eye, keener look at inflationary trends and the potential for interest rates to increase. What I've seen in general terms, broad parameters, is that some of the sideline money, some of the people that have been sitting out there for the last five years watching the market are now participating. They're now jumping in the market, and they're creating good market activity. The commercial market, industrial market, is somewhat stable, if not appreciating in some sectors. The condominium market is still faltering. For whatever reason, I'm seeing value decline in the fifteen to twenty percentile. The last revaluation in two thousand and twelve, it was outwards of twenty-five to thirty percent. Now over to residential, single-family detached. In two thousand and twelve, construction costs for a new house were roughly about eighty dollars a square foot. Present day, two thousand and seventeen, we've come up about twenty-seven percent on average to about a hundred and ten dollars a square foot. And what that translated into was a little bit of an apportionment shift. What I mean by that is, we haven't seen as much new construction development because of the spike in new construction costs. And from that, what we see is a rebalancing from land valuation from the two thousand and twelve analysis that has basically depleted our land values by about twenty-five to thirty percent in the residential sector. With that, looking at the construction costs increasing by twenty-five to twenty-seven percent, we've reanalyzed those components of the property value. So the more improvements that you have on your parcel, the more likely it is that you're making up the differential and the value decrease for the land value adjustment. And in some cases, some neighborhoods, which I've talked to many, many people within the short period of time since about a week and a half ago that those seventeen thousand notices hit the mailboxes. And I want to talk to anybody that has a concern over their property values. I had an extremely disturbing meeting with one particular property owner that was beyond upset. And misinformation can change the whole dialogue that takes place in a conversation. And as soon as I was able to get to the root of the conversation, which indicated from one perspective that everybody in the neighborhood's value was going down, which was a complete falsehood. And the true information was conveyed, and sales statistics were given out, and understanding of what their property value was all about was better understood, and the conversation changed. So, I'm more than willing to say that, you know what? I'm not the know-all, be-all in this process. I'm taking one statistical analysis approach that looks at market values of transactions that have occurred, and not everybody is gonna be the same. So, from that standpoint, if you have anybody that you've talked to directly, send them my way. We do have another venue. Not everybody wants to talk to me. I get that, too. We have a good Board of Assessment Appeals that was just elected. As long as you fill out an application by February twentieth, you can go past me and take on your democratic rights and go to the Board of Assessment Appeals and challenge your valuation that way. But we do want it substantiated. We do wanna see why you believe your value isn't what we're setting the value at today.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the assessor? Okay, thank you very much. And for another indulgence, we also have with us tonight Sean Dunn and actually, I see other members of the Energy Task Force. And they are making their official presentations. So if possible, if we could ask for a motion to move item fifteen to public participation. Mr. Dunn is gonna give a brief overview. We have all received the Energy Task Force report. I'm going to ask that no actions be taken tonight because I want to ensure that everyone's read it. In the document, there are policy outlines, key actions, and the role of the government that we should be doing. It also goes across all departments, including the Board of Education. And there's some stewardship items that we're gonna have to digest. And then there's actually some ordinance issues, there's some salary committee issues. So, for tonight, I think it would be very beneficial if you could synopsize this.
Well, you just did most of my synopsization, so. Well, Sean Dunn, good evening, Mayor, good evening, Council members, and thanks for this time. I'm representing.
Before you start, can I make a motion to move item fifteen up on the agenda to the announcement section?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. The floor is yours.
So, good evening, everybody, and thanks for the opportunity. I'm representing the Mayor's Energy Task Force on Energy Consumption, or METF as it's known. I'm standing instead of Frank Stausky, who's got an obligation tonight to do, I believe, board work with his credit. But thanks for the opportunity. We're very excited to do this. There's some ex-Mayor, members of our task force on the council, and it's great to have everybody hopefully review it. So I want to leave some time for questions. But it's been two and a half years. We're very excited to now bring this forward to you in this draft form. A lot has gone on in that two and a half years. Things that you've seen now, hard things, LEDs on the entire community, fuel cells being considered for our water, you know, pollution plants. You've got other things that are going on in town that from two and a half years ago that we're considering for this plan now have actually accomplished. So, we're looking forward to the next generation of things. And in the plan, it outlines that. So, I just want to give you some of that sense that in all this effort since two thousand and nine, since the task force was created, so many things have been contemplated, a couple of plans have been put forward, they have been shelved. We're hoping now to get some action on this plan. So as I think everybody knows, we are members of the clean energy community. We signed a municipal pledge, and we've committed in that pledge to reduce our energy consumption in the town by twenty percent by two thousand and eighteen, which is just about a year from now. And we're doing really well. We're about hovering about thirteen percent. And we're looking to find where that other seven percent is gonna come from. And in the plan, we prescribe, you know, mechanisms to get to that level. But there's so many different ways we can go about this, and we want to put these things forward to you in the plan. Some of our towns that are surrounding us that have already gotten to twenty percent, Plainville's gotten there, Bloomfield's gotten there. West Hartford, as you know, has been one of our guiding lights, and the energy specialists in that town has been one of our mentors to help us get to this point with the plan today. From the beginning, we wanted to focus in on the municipal aspects first. We know that there's a great institutional and industrial capability in this town. We also know that there's a residential component. Those will be future phases of the plan. But for right now, as you mentioned before, we're focusing in on the municipal aspects of this, where we can make savings within our municipal operations, within our Board of Education, and also with the Water Department and their consumption of energy. So the focus, the way that the plan has been structured and the recommendations and conclusions come out in policy statements, in goal-setting, and also in key actions. And what we try to do in the seven areas that we focused in on is provide short-term key actions that I think are accomplishable. And if you take a look, as you've read this, some of these things may ring with some things that are already been in people's minds. Other things are far-reaching. So we've got a range of things that we're promoting to try to accomplish to get to this twenty percent and to the future. So, one of the things that the task force is considering and promoting very strongly is the creation of an energy commission. That's a very strong advocated point within the task force. The ongoing creation of this commission will help us get to these goals. And within that also, we're advocating strongly for an energy manager. As I mentioned before, the guiding light that we've been using is West Hartford. Stanford has an energy manager. There's a number of other towns within the state that all have either energy specialists or energy managers, full-time, part-time. They share responsibilities in various communities. But in all those communities, the key thing that we really look at strongly is whether it's self-sustaining. And as I mentioned about West Hartford, Captain Davini has been working part-time since two thousand and nine. West Hartford came out with their plan, full plan, fully approved by the City of West Hartford in two thousand and nine. They're coming out with their updated plan in two thousand and seventeen. The mayor feels so strongly that she's, he's actually promoting the fact that he wants to make her full-time. She's not advocating for it, they are. Because she's actually returning three to four times her salary in the return back into her self-sustaining position. So that's why I feel strongly that we can advocate for a self-sustaining position here. As you may know, we do have energy responsibilities within a position in the Public Works. And David Oakes has been a member of our task force for a while, and he is a key component in this, in the processing of all of the energy reports that you see in the appendix. The energy portfolio measures all of the consumption of all of our sixty-two properties. And as you probably see from some of that analysis, the Board of Education and the schools absorb quite a bit of that. But David's been spearheading a lot of this, even going down to the point of getting grants. Grants to change out Manor's library for fifteen thousand dollars to LEDs. That's the role that we think that the energy manager can play. A full-time energy manager can go after these grants, can work with the departments to go over their goals, to make these goals budget line items that we can then compare at the end of each year to how we're doing and what buttressing support they can get. So, we're looking really forward to hoping that we can create an energy manager out of this. One of the things that we did mention before is that we're about a year short of the goal of twenty percent by two thousand and eighteen. So that Clean Energy Community's municipal pledge is not an onerous pledge. It doesn't have any penalty for us not making it there. But we know that we think through this plan, we can get to that and beyond that with the goals that we prescribe in here. So, with that, I just want to talk about what we feel strongly about the culture of conservation. Back in the seventies, we created this culture of conservation through recycling. And now recycling is ubiquitous. We think going through now and creating this culture of conservation in our school curriculums, with our youth, and with the rest of the people who are supporting Bristol, that we can get to this culture of conservation of a philosophy of sustainability, and then make this, this community a really outstanding star in how we actually create this culture of conservation. So, with that, we'd be glad to take any questions on the plan.
Through the chair, just a comment if I may. I was part of that commission for six months or so, maybe a year. And I don't think I ever sat on a board that worked harder than you guys did. A diverse, very diverse population, lots of ideas, lots of, lots of work, lots of frustration. So I commend you on getting this done. I know that was something that no one ever thought would happen. And I do commend you on making it happen and, and bringing it to fruition. So, again, well, well done.
Well, we've had some great support, Board of Finance, council members, concerned citizens. We've got within our midst, somebody from Fuel Cell Technologies, the chief counsel of that firm sits on a board and knows her stuff about fuel cells. Probably one of the cleanest next-of-nuclear generation of energy for the future. So to have somebody that knowledgeable and that capable is a real blessing. We also have people from EverSource. We had a number of other people from technology and industry. So, we're really looking forward to perhaps your guidance on how to create this commission and stock it with full-time, part-time, and participating members from industry that can really push us through. Thanks for that.
I have one question, but before that, does anybody else have any questions or comments? Peter, have you read all seven sections?
Focus on the one you read.
I actually had a question without getting too far into the weeds. I noticed that our two high schools, Bristol Eastern and Bristol Central, were, for lack of a better word, are poor performers. There's, the, the buildings that use the most energy, and they're the ones that are the farthest off-target from reducing their energy. And I'm just wondering, just in general terms, without getting too far into the weeds, is that just because of their size generally? Or is it partly because of their age? You know what I mean? Is there a particular issue or problem that's putting them in that category?
You hit it all. Size, age, construction, function, use, whether they're used, if central or eastern, is used during the summer for summer school, lights on.
Sports at night. So they're like kind of twenty-four, seven facilities, okay.
So that energy portfolio that we've got at the back there allows us to get down into those weeds, look at that, and describe mechanisms that can perhaps get us to putting those into better performance. So going all the ways up to where they may be considered because we've got the land, to put, envision, two parking spaces, fuel cells there on both of those schools. Those schools, then we'd get their entire power, all of that, and get them from their poor performance all the ways up over twenty percent in energy savings and consumption. So, but you hit it all. It's just use, construction, volume of use, types, et cetera. So, there are things that you can squeeze out a percent or two here, but truly looking to the future and looking to a fuel cell at each one of those installations would probably be the best recommendation we could come with at this time.
Thank you.
So, my question to you is, in terms of, as we read this and digest this report and formulate what we need to do from a governance standpoint, you are still operating as a task force, and there are two vacancies. Is it the pleasure of your task force that I should fill these vacancies so that you can continue working on different facets? Or has the work concluded to such a point that adding additional members at this time would put them at a disadvantage because they don't have this body of knowledge?
No, we'd love to have your recommendations. We need counsel. Obviously, we need counsel liaison. And we'd love to have the additional members come from wherever you feel would be best picked. But as Dave talks, we've got a really great crowd. We're really enthused about it, so we, we look forward to having anybody else join us.
Okay, so you will continue as a task force, and you'd like to be fully, fully staffed at this point? And then as we transition to the potential of it being by ordinance, which would be a commission, we can discuss that then?
We foresee the task force going on as long as it's necessary in order to get to the commission that we're recommending.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thanks so much.
Okay, so we'd like the record to show that Councilman Maderos has joined us at seven forty. Congratulations on your new position.
Thank you.
And you're in charge of implementing the task force. So, we're now to announcements. And I will start on my far right.
Okay, good evening. First announcement involves a dad-daughter bowling event. And that's Saturday, January twentieth, two to four. And I just wanted to underline the fact that it's all ages. It, it could be a middle-aged daughter It could be a middle-aged daughter bringing her 85-year-old father, or a 25-year-old dad bringing his five-year-old daughter. So Rippey wanted me to emphasize that it's all ages. And once again, it's Saturday, January 20th, from 2 to 4. The cost is $15 per person, and that includes shoes, pizza, soda, and two hours of bowling. And once again, it's just dads and daughters celebrating their bond. And it's at Spare Time Lanes on Farmington Avenue, and there's 15 lanes available. And for tickets, please contact Rippey Patton at 860-830-0719. The next announcement involves the monthly West End Association meeting, which is tomorrow, Wednesday, December 13th, at the Riverview Apartments on Laurel Street. And this starts at 7:00 p.m. And the association will be voting in a new slate of officers, announcing their goals for 2018, and hosting a small reception afterwards. And all concerned citizens are invited.
You're all set.
I am, thank you.
Very good. All right, I have a couple announcements for the senior center. Registration for winter classes at the senior center will be held on Wednesday, January 3rd, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. And after that, weekdays between 8:30 a.m. and 5:00 p.m., beginning on January 4th. The senior center offers a variety of fitness classes, art classes, computer classes to its members. And residents of Bristol 55 and older can join the senior center free of charge. The senior center is also sponsoring an American Red Cross blood drive on Thursday, January 4th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. And people can call the Red Cross or go to the redcross.org to make an appointment. And anyways, you can always see a full listing and offerings of the senior center by downloading the latest newsletter, by visiting the City of Bristol website, and going to the senior center page. I also want to mention, it's the holiday season, and people are getting out and shopping or going to amazon.com and shopping. But what I'd like to have everybody remember is, remember to support our local businesses here in Bristol. It's easy to jump out to the mall, but we have a lot to offer here in Bristol. And in particular, I had a chance to speak with some businesses affected by the Route 6 construction. And these businesses are strained. They aren't getting the traffic that they were getting prior to the construction going on. So please think of these businesses when you need an oil change or a haircut, or you need to take out food, because there are a lot of businesses there that are being affected. And take a little bit of extra time to support these businesses in their difficult journey through the next few months. That's it.
Okay, I just have two. The first is the Forestville Village Association is having their annual carol sing on Monday, the 18th of December at 7 o'clock, and that takes place outside by the old railroad station building in Forestville. And it's always a fun time, and it's always good to support the Forestville Village Association because they're really supporting Forestville. They do a lot of fundraising and also beautification of the Forestville Center area and keeping that historical look going in Forestville, and they're a great organization. And my other announcement is simply that we do have a new restaurant on Route 6 in the Pier 1 Plaza. Firehouse Subs has come to Bristol. This is a franchise business, but it is the second one in Connecticut. And so we'd like, if you can, to stop in and welcome them to Bristol. And the way this particular business runs is that a portion of your purchase goes to a foundation that provides equipment to firefighters and other first responders across the country. It's a tiny portion, but it's a good thing they're doing, so I would like us all to support them and welcome them to Bristol. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I hope everyone enjoys a very special and joyous holiday season. Councilman Han stole my thunder because I do want to encourage everyone as much as possible to shop locally. You know, as we went through the election cycle, talked to a lot of people, the question came up very often, how do we make businesses in Bristol successful? How do we get people, investors, to invest in Bristol? And it's really by making the current business owners successful. Everyone will want a piece of that economic success. So the big shopping season, do your best to support the local restaurants, novelty shops, hairdressers, as you mentioned. They depend so much on this time of year, so I think if we really focus on it, get those gift certificates here locally, it means a lot to a lot of people. And I want to, just because you stole my thunder, I do want to congratulate you. A few of us attended last, this past Sunday, the Brass and Wind Ensemble and the Bristol Corral had its holiday concert, probably the best one yet. St. Paul's High School, it was sold out. You guys did a great job. The amount of talent in Bristol is stunning. It was great. Keep it up.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Didn't mean to steal your time.
Yes, you did.
Councilman Mills?
You didn't sing Saturday, did you, Sunday?
At home.
Oh, okay. Just wanted to make sure.
Couple of things I have to add tonight is, I'm sure you all go to our website, Bristol All Heart. On there now is a daily weather report. So if you want to know what the weather is and you don't want to look outside, go to Bristol All Heart. Also, if you turn on Nutmeg TV once a month, our BDA puts on a uniquely Bristol show. Mark Thomas puts it on. This week, they featured the Soup Kitchen at Zion Lutheran Church, did a terrific job. And it just shows the all-heart factor of what goes on in Bristol and how many meals are served each month, et cetera. And if you really get a chance, and you should make it a point to go, find out when this is on, and I'm sure you can check the Nutmeg TV schedule, or go onto YouTube and get it there, but it's something you should be looking at every week. Mark Thomas does a wonderful job and really promotes Bristol, many phases of Bristol. They've done it for three months in a row now, and I would definitely suggest you go to it. That's all I have.
Great. I just have a couple of quick announcements. The Bristol Parks and Rec Department is presenting their 32nd Annual Sailand Village Event at Rockwell Park, starting this Thursday, December 14th, and Friday, December 15th. The hours are 6:00 to 7:30, and then also Saturday and Sunday, December 16th and 17th, from 12:00 to 4:00. Some of the highlights include the West Bristol and Green Hills Chorus on Thursday, a live petting zoo, and horse-drawn wagon rides on Saturday and Sunday. And it's a great chance to visit with Santa Claus and get your pictures at a local event. The event is predominantly free, so check out the website, bristlrec.com. Additionally, their winter program registration opens Monday, January 8th, and they've got a lot of good activities to take a look at. While we're talking about parks, Mountain View School is going to be celebrating its 50th year. The school has a dated playground that's over 30 years old right now, and it's currently out of commission. The kids can't use it. So the Mountain View PTO is currently engaged in a comprehensive fundraising initiative with the hope that they're going to build a new playground by 2019. The current fundraising goal for that project is $75,000. So if you're interested in contributing or getting involved in that initiative, you can contact the PTO president, Kelly Anthony. Her number is 860-461-8490, or her email, kelly.m.anthony@espn.com. And she gave me permission to give that out, so you can feel free to contact her there. Then lastly, not parks related, there is a young professional group in the City of Bristol called Pivot. It is the Professional Young Visionaries of Tomorrow. It's a group for ages 21 to 40, made up of individuals, business owners, local leaders looking to make Bristol and the surrounding communities a better place to live, work, and play. They offer networking and volunteer events at local businesses, which allows people to build and expand their personal networks. In 2018, something new that Pivot is doing, they're offering a membership for $50. There's also a 20% discount if you get it now before January 1st. That membership gives you discount off of Pivot events, Chamber and United Way events, and you can check out all their upcoming opportunities at pivotct.com is their website. That's all I have.
I just have one announcement, and it involves the regifting program. We, several agencies, including the mayor's office, assures collecting gifts from people that have gifts that you may not be using, something that you might have received from someone who didn't know your taste or color preference. If they are new and unwrapped and you'd like to donate them, children from the Bristol Boys and Girls Club, Cambridge Park, and other places, I think the Family Resource Centers, are then able to shop for a loved one and learn the art of giving, as well as receiving during the holiday season. So there's many collection points throughout town, but the mayor's office will be one through the end of the week. We're going to now move on to the consent agenda, and I'll turn the agenda over to our city clerk.
There are three items. Item 5A is to place on file the new hire report for November 2017. 5B is to approve the tax refunds dated December 6th, 2017. And 5C is to approve a tax assessment freeze application for Tute Velay and Marc Tate, owners of 28 Porter Court Bristol, for the rehabilitation of obliterating property with the restoration of a single-family structure per Bristol Code of Ordinances, Section 5-57.
Mayor, can we pull off 5A as I have a question, please?
Certainly.
I'd like to make a motion to accept B and C.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Councilman Proleski, your question?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'd like to ask Mrs. Ferguson a question on the new hire report. And I'm sorry, we had a meeting before this, I forgot to ask you this. Can you tell me, with the new hire report, how many of those folks are from Bristol?
It's not reported in this report. If you want that in the future, we can do that. I don't know off the top of my head.
Oh, you wouldn't know?
No.
Okay.
I think in an email you told me that two of the labor positions, one was from Bridgeport and one was from West Haven.
You asked about public works specifically.
Right.
Yes.
You know, thank you, Mrs. Ferguson. You know, what I'd like to do, Mayor, is can we refer to our Salary Committee the concept of putting together a local preferential hiring policy?
Absolutely. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion on the motion to refer to the Salary Committee the concept of creating a local preferential hiring policy? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Mayor.
Do we need to accept that? Item A.
Sure, that's true. So, Councilman Proleski, will you now make a motion to accept and place on file the new hire report that you pulled off of the consent calendar?
Move it. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, we're back to item six. Reports and committee reports, starting on my far left.
Sure, I have a couple of things from the police department. I got quite a bit here, but I'm just going to pick a couple if it works. The Bristol Police Department is conducting their annual toy drive to benefit the Bristol Salvation Army. Toys can be dropped off at the Bristol Police Department, their front lobby, up until and including 1219. Toys should be unwrapped and appropriate for boys and girls between the ages of one and 12 years old. Additionally, the Bristol Police Department, they're conducting their Stuff the Cruiser toy and clothing drive. That's going to be on December 18th, from 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. at Bristol Walmart. Cash donations and gifts for ages 6 to 16 will benefit the Bristol Youth Services Holiday Gift Giving Program for families in need this holiday season. And then finally, the Bristol Police Department closed out their Special Olympics fundraising campaign for 2017. The events held included the torch run, car show at the Doubletree, Over the Edge, and Tip a Cop held at Bristol 99. All in total, they raised over $28,000 for the Special Olympics, so very nice job to them. That's good. Oh, I'm sorry, and one last thing, too. Previously, in December, the Kern Park Project was moved for the Board of Parks Commissioners, so that's going to be on the agenda for the December 20th meeting coming up. So if anyone's interested in that project, they're welcome to show up and be heard.
Thank you. Councilman Mills?
I have nothing.
Councilman Proleski?
Yeah, Mayor, thank you. A couple of things. The mayor asked me to attend a meeting of the Board of Finance Banking Audit Committee. Met with the contracted outside auditors who is reviewing the Board of Education and the variance to its budget that we all heard about a couple of months ago. I was very impressed, Mayor, with both the review process and the methodology. They went through in pretty good detail about their approach to the problem, or assessing the problem, and identifying whether this is a problem just singular in nature of its across the complete Board of Education line, and it seems to be focused on what we think is some variance, some numbers that were, let's say plug numbers, if you will, that weren't changed. Well, the full report's going to be out within the month, and so we'll all get a chance to see that. But they've also looked at, if you think about it, our special education budget's a $32 million program. And they're making recommendations about what they call laser focus in terms of how we run that, how we manage it, and how we book expenses, like payroll and encumbering, is the word I was looking for, I always look at Robin, encumbering our expenses so we can better forecast and do a better job budgeting. But one of the things that they were very clear about is, they don't believe that there was any fraud or mal-intent. It might be a lot of room for improvement in terms of structure and how we identify things. But I was really glad that they had put so much time and effort into this, and the full report, I think, will be very helpful to us as we plan managing that function further. Ordinances meeting on December 20th. I think we're going to, I hope to plan to publish some new language on the, one of the projects we've been working on for about a year, on non-conforming streets. And we would like input from the general public, so that's the 20th at 5:00 p.m. Real estate is active, and code enforcement, I've got more, but we'll save it for next month. Thank you.
Yes, I have two. The first is, I am the liaison to the Water Board, and I'm very excited about that. That's something I've always been interested in since I was a little kid. I went to a tour of the water facility, fourth, fifth grade sometime, many, many years ago. I was very impressed with it. I would tell people that we had the best water in the country, like, because they told us that. But I've always believed that, and I still think it's true. And I'm actually going to be going on a much more extensive tour next week with our director. But at the meeting, at the end of November, they did report that they have hired an architect to do a new roof for their Terryville Avenue facility. And as I always do when I hear about roof projects, I say, did anyone consider solar? And apparently, they very much considered solar. I got a lot of laughs from that question, like, you don't want to know how much we talked about solar. But apparently, there are some issues with that roof. There are drains and apparatus on that roof that make it less than ideal to put solar panels there. But in those conversations, they did talk about using some of the extensive land that we own, that the Water Department owns, the watershed that keeps all of our water healthy, to use those for solar power. And so I'm hoping that the Water Department becomes one of our first departments to become powered by solar. And I'm not putting a timetable on that, but I will, you know, make sort of a proposal that people can feel free to compete with us on that, compete with the Water Board on being the first department to run by solar in the city. So I'm very excited about that. And the Salary Committee met earlier this evening, and I do have four motions to bring forward to the council. The first, the Salary Committee unanimously recommends to City Council to approve a 2.8% salary increase for Pine Lake Challenge Course and Adventure Program positions of senior lead facilitator, facilitator one, facilitator two, facilitator three, in youth and community services effective January 2nd, 2018, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion?
I just wanted to say, Mayor, this is something that we do yearly. These are slight increases, these are fairly low-paid seasonal employees, but this program is sort of a technical thing, and in order to keep those folks coming to our program year after year, we do try to give them small increases.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Second motion from the Salary Committee today. The Salary Committee unanimously recommends to City Council to approve creation of a seasonal position of social and cultural recreation coordinator in youth and community services at $20 an hour effective May 1st, 2018, and to refer to the Board of Finance Services at $20 an hour effective May 1st, 2018, and to refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
Can you just clarify what the position is for?
This one has to do with coordinating activities during the summer months for disadvantaged children, often like bowling leagues and, uh, some sports activities. Sometimes, uh, different members of the community, um, work with them, and this is be the person supervising them to get these, um, positions, uh, get the programs advertised and get the kids involved. And it's not many hours a week, it's a very part-time seasonal position.
Any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and for the record, I'm going to abstain because I do believe that my husband has participated in that program in the past.
A third motion from Salary. The Salary Committee unanimously recommends to City Council to improve an increase to the hourly rate for the position of Pine Lake Challenge Course Coordinator from $25.84 an hour to $30 an hour for an average of 29 hours a week and 44 weeks per year effective January 2nd, 2018, and refer to the Board of Finance for informational purposes.
Second.
Any discussion?
The comment I would want to make about this is that the person that has been doing this job for many years, I think over 15, um, is trying to step back, and we are going to have to go out and recruit for this. And so, um, the Director of Youth Services felt it was necessary to raise the salary slightly, and she is hoping that, um, this person will get involved with fundraising and grants. Again, Pine Lake Challenge Course, for those who don't know, is funded by the program fees. So she's hoping that a person with the expertise to advertise the program more will bring in more funds and pay for the increase in salary.
Okay. Motion has been made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
And a fourth motion from the Salary Committee. The Salary Committee unanimously recommends to City Council to approve an upgrade to the position of Budget and Accounting Assistant in the Comptroller's Office. This is a local 233, Ask Me 233, Code 7, $22.31 an hour to $24.73 an hour, to a Code 8A, which is $24.82 an hour, to $27.42 an hour, and to refer to the Board of Finance for funding.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I mean, discussion, sorry.
Again, just, uh, discuss, not on this particular one, but all the other ones, the whole board, the whole function is self-funded. So that's the critical thing, is that their monies that are being paid out are being raised by that organization to pay it out, so there's no, other than this position, obviously, there's no effect on the city budget.
Yes. Any other discussion on the budgeting and accounting position? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is that it?
That's it for me, thank you.
Councilman Han?
I have nothing, it's time.
Councilman Kelly?
I have three items. First one's very brief, but significant, and that's the city and the Board of Education are continuing to meet, monitor ongoing expenses, and recently, the superintendent announced a spending and hiring freeze. The second is a, uh, report for school readiness. And at the last school readiness council meeting, it was reported that all of the spaces are filled with the program, but they will continue to take names on a waitlist. A total of 396 preschool children are being schooled, are being served by the School of Readiness Grant, which means $245,000 coming into our community on a monthly basis to help support programs. Uh, that includes Bristol Preschool, Childcare Center, Imagination Museum of Early Learning, and four Bristol Board of Education schools, and to provide quality early care education to our three and four-year-old residents. These funds pay for at least a partial salary of 96 professionals working in this field. This is not only a program that assists young children, giving them the opportunity to learn, but it also assists working parents where the children are placed in a safe, nurturing, and quality setting. But we also can't forget, this is also an economic development, because this grant helps to pay the salaries of numerous professionals and many Bristol residents. And since Bristol is at a SR grant capacity, serving preschool children, the SR grant manager has been told by the Office of Early Learning that our grant will not be decreased at all this year because of our track record. And this obviously is great news. Thirdly, uh, this involves a report, speaking of the 39 students who have been enrolled from disaster areas. And the Board of Education is engaged in a weekly emergency management department conference call, which includes updates from Region 3 towns. And following is the breakdown by grade, not specifically grade level, but by kindergarten. Now, this is 39 students, once again. There's one student in kindergarten, 18 enrolled in first to fifth grade, eight middle school students, 10 high school students, and two elementary school students have not been assigned a grade level as of yet. And insofar as the details, 20 of the 39 newly enrolled students qualified for EL services, English language services, with the majority being Level 1, which is no English language whatsoever. One-third of the enrollment are known or have disclosed special education status, and EL services are not special ed. The largest clusters of the students are at Green Hills, there's nine, West Bristol, there's six, Bristol Central, there are seven. And currently, six billion, six buildings qualify as Spanish bilingual schools. 20 more students involved in that. And this involves one Spanish bilingual teacher, five teachers that are teaching English to speakers of other languages, uh, seven part-time tutors as needed, and two translators as needed. And EL services are capped at Green Hills, West Bristol, and Ivy Drive. Thank you, Mayor.
Just as a segue, the 39 students that Bristol has, in comparison to, um, the other 16 communities that have reported 10-plus students, Hartford has taken in 330, Waterbury has taken in 231, New Britain has 191 students, New Haven is at 155, Bridgeport, 147, Meriden at 138. So this is statewide, as of right now, there is 1,700 students in the system that does not take into account their families that are here as well. And I know that we have, through the Bristol Cares Commission, a consortium of social service and nonprofit providers who are working diligently to ensure that there's a smooth transition for those families that are coming to Bristol. I'd like to thank them for everything that they've done in such short notice, as well as during the holiday season, to make them feel welcome in Bristol. Committee reports from my end. We have had some, um, engagement at the BDA level about social media and community perception, and there is a meeting, I think at the end of this week, concerning all of our Facebook managers and, you know, talking about messaging, as well as the, uh, community at large, the Bristol Talks, um, Facebook group, so to speak, they've been engaged in discussions as well, putting our best foot forward, not at the risk of, um, suppressing dialogue, obviously, but putting our best foot forward is of paramount importance from economic development, arts and culture, and really just how people feel about living in a community. So I think that those discussions are going to continue under the auspices of the BDA. I've been meeting with department heads, and while this is not technically a committee report, um, we are going through and discussing budgets and salaries and all those types of things that are operational in nature. And we are starting to look at projects that might not make sense, that have not yet been funded, and we're going to start, um, having those discussions about what can be pulled back over some of these, uh, next few months. So in terms of reports and committee reports, I think we're done, and we can move on to unfinished business. And again, I will start at my far left.
I have none.
None, Your Honor?
None.
None for me.
None for me.
Okay, I have a few items. The first in, um, under unfinished business, for those of you who are following the O'Connell and Bingham, uh, school renovations, we did have a meeting last week, and they're starting to, um, try to ramp up in both schools. Uh, Bingham is, is far ahead of the process because of the fire at O'Connell, and, uh, they're still anticipating spring 2019 occupancy. We are working through some fire suppression issues and construction permit issues, some demolition issues, and I think we're going to continue to have that dialogue with the developer as we continue, but that looks like it's, uh, back in line. We also have discussions about how we, as the City Council, through our governance mode, can continue to build best practices, especially in relation to sexual harassment, workplace harassment, and everything else that, um, we are, uh, we have to take control of. In terms of what, what has happened in the past and what we want to prevent moving forward, we are going to be engaging council in order to do a best practices reflection, and also, um, recommendations that can go to ordinance, that can, um, speak to our charter language, and just in general, review policies, practices, and the performance of, um, the entities that were involved. This does not mean that anything that has come before is being re-investigated, it's simply a best practices review as we move forward. We anticipate that this is going to start at the end of this year or the beginning of 2018, and the woman that we have chosen to engage is Giovanna Weller, who is an attorney with Carmody, Torrance, Sandic, and Hennessy. So we'll be getting regular reports on that, as well as just understanding our role in managing this, as well as making these changes and recommendations as we go forward, in order to protect the city both from a financial and liability standpoint. And my last item is, um, many of you, those of you who are sitting here, as well as those who are aware, the, um, discussion about this building actually went to RFP in terms of proposals last year. And so that working group, uh, one, one request for proposal was received in August, and a small working group started discussing, um, the potential of that. And so that stopped in October, and I'm looking to restart that so that we can have some direction about whether we stay here, we look at the opportunities in another building, and what those options are. So that will start again, um, probably next week or the week after, depending on when our purchasing agent is able to pull together the meeting of those people that are involved in that. And last, we do have, um, we have some hospital updates that are moving forward. The city is working on our issues as well. We're hoping for some type of closing and, and that type of, um, contract settlement, probably in January. And not connected to that, but also related to the hospital, is the fact that they have also suffered some, um, new budget cuts, and they are, uh, down about $800,000 in this small hospital pool. And so, um, representatives from the hospital and I are going to Hartford on Thursday to meet with Senator Looney. It is, um, expected that they're going to start making some informal cuts and discussing some of the budget remedies on Friday. So we're hoping to get in there and talk about the value of community hospitals, as well as hopefully advocate for the other, I believe it's nine, community hospitals that fall into this pool as well. So that's going to be an issue as well. And, and just as much as I'm segueing between those issues, the hospital budget is not connected to the downtown project, but these hospital issues are important overall since they are our, um, second biggest employer. So it's of concern to all of us. Also, actually, out of BDA, you heard at the Joint Board that we created a Small Business Fund. That is going to be for the small businesses that don't qualify for some of the other opportunities. That is going to be a $5,000 cap, and they are going to be responsible for a 25% match out of that. And that is going to be hopefully live. I think we actually have one application to date, and we'll be doing some restructuring of our marketing materials so that small businesses who may be eligible can approach the BDA and have that as an option as well. So just in case anybody heard that at Joint Board and wasn't aware of what that is, that joins three other programs that we currently have under economic development. I think that is it for unfinished business, so we'll go back to my far right for, we're on new business.
Nothing here?
None, nothing?
None.
Okay, I have a few, and actually, Councilman Han does have a new business item?
Or are we going to do that in the appointments?
No, um, the Bright Ideas Grant?
Oh, yeah.
So, um, we had a, a last-minute opportunity to get the Bright Ideas Grant, which many of you heard Commissioner Dunn from the Energy Task Force talk about. It's a $15,000 grant, which is going to go for LED lights or some sort of lights at Man Ros. So what we need to do right now in order to take advantage of the timing of this meeting is I'd like a motion to bring this item onto the agenda.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on bringing the Bright Ideas Grant onto the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. We now have a resolution, or just a motion, I think, to read concerning this grant application.
Be it hereby resolved by the City Council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, to authorize the mayor or acting mayor to sign an agreement between the City of Bristol and EverSource Energy for a $15,000 Bright Idea Grant funded by the Connecticut Energy Efficiency Fund through the Clean Energy Communities Program. To authorize the mayor to execute any and all documents associated with the grant, including the Clean Energy Communities Municipal Pledge. Be it further resolved, that this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
I think it was worded as a resolution.
Was it? Does it say resolution at the top?
Yes, it is a resolution.
Okay, then we'll do a roll call vote, starting on my far right. Councilman Kelly?
Yes.
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 The chair votes yes, motion passes. Thank you, Councilman Han, for bringing that forward. So for new business from the mayor's office, I have a few items, uh, I'm just going to talk about two. The first one is, I am pulling together a chairman circle for all of the volunteer boards that have chairman to come in before the FOI meeting next month. Um, I'd like to talk to them about shared visions and talking about efficiencies, as well as, um, their responsibilities as chairman in terms of FOI, meeting decorum, their responsibilities with attendance, and, and all of that. So that's going to take place prior to the FOI hearing and the annual training that we do for all of our staff and our volunteer members. Um, I believe we're still collecting some email addresses, and that will happen shortly. And then the last item, I referenced it in, I think, one of my earlier comments about department heads, but we've come to the point where we have three of our bargaining units that are coming up for, uh, negotiation this coming year, and we are really trying to build a very, um, trust-based relationship with our labor organizations, because we know that they're on the front lines of knowing exactly where cost savings are, efficiencies, and, and where we can do better in delivery of city services. So at this point, after many of these discussions, both with department heads and the union representatives, my head is kind of spinning because the wage and compensation packages and the job codes, they're all over, and it's really been a patchwork for a number of years. So in order to start from a position of strength and one that has much more clarity than what we currently have, I'd like to ask the City Council for someone to make a motion to send to the Salary Committee, um, a directive for the Salary Committee, probably via the Personnel Department, to create a conceptual framework for discussion of our current wage and benefit schedules in reference to other communities of similar demographics and size. So what I'm looking for is five communities, what they pay, what those job descriptions are, and I want to compare that, because right now, I think, we're going to still continue this patchwork of what we heard tonight with many of the Salary Committee items, we have an energy manager to consider. We also probably have some job positions that could either be through attrition, retirement, or other types of movement, um, changed. So at this point, instead of continuing the conversation with 72 different job codes, I want to have a starting position. So if I could have that motion to seek wage and benefit compensation packages of similar communities to Bristol, conceptual only, no obligation, no contractual obligation, and no obligation on behalf of the council, I would like to have that before February 1st, so that we can continue to start these negotiations.
I'd make a motion for that?
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion or questions about what I'm looking for? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I will turn it back to our city clerk for resignations.
We have three resignations, Your Honor. The first is from Edward Demato Sr. from the Board of Police Commissioners. The second is from Diane Nacera from the Board of Park Commissioners, and the third is from Melina Acevito from the Board of Library Directors.
Is there a motion to approve and place on file the resignations, as well as send a letter of thanks?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Okay. And now we're moving on to appointments, and there are several. So starting with the Mayor's Task Force on HIV/AIDS. We are trying to get all of our boards and commissions, as well as our committees, back up to full strength. So in terms of the Mayor's Task Force, there are four appointments. The first one is to appoint Heidi Joseph, who is the VP at Wheeler Clinic Health and Wellness, to replace Christina Cipriana, who resigned. There are no terms. We can take these as a group. The second one is to appoint Abby Kelly, Director of Crassalis Center, formerly St. Phillips, to replace Richard Braglia. He resigned in October, again, no term. And two new names to appoint, Danita Rose Daniels from the Human Resources Agency, and to appoint Valerie Ingram. So four appointments for the Mayor's Task Force on HIV/AIDS. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the City Cemetery Commission to appoint Linda Arbismann to replace Joan Trafford, who resigned, an unexpired term to March of 2020.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Bristol Development Authority to reappoint Robert Passamano for a five-year term to December of 2022.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. To reappoint Charles Seer, a five-year term to December 2022 for the Bristol Development Authority.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. For the Commission for Persons with Disabilities to appoint Heather Woodbury to replace Melissa Zukowski, an unexpired term to June of 2019.
Move it.
Is there a second?
Second. I'm just questioning whether she might have been appointed last month.
Theresa and I had that discussion, and so we're just going to do this just in case because we don't think she was. Okay. So any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board of Fire Commissioners to appoint Dana Jandro to replace Greg Belanger, Section 2-9 resignation. And for those of you who may not know, Dana is a well-respected retired fire captain from Bristol who retired over seven years ago. Will be a huge asset to the Fire Board.
Move it.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bristol Historic District Commission to appoint Jason Wright to replace Steve Cohen, who was an alternate member with a Section 2-9. His house, actually, 140 Woodland Street, is in the district, which is part of the requirements for this commission. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Housing Authority of City of Bristol, this is a mayor's appointment, not requiring the council's approval. And it is my choice to appoint Brian Shaheenski to replace Gary Klemmick, a five-year term to December 31st, 2022. Housing Code Appeals Board, there are two appointments, both to December 31st, 2020. The first one is John Fitzgerald, who currently serves as the chair. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The second one is Orlando Calfee, another three-year term.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Inland Wetlands Commission, again, a mayor's appointment, not requiring a second approval. I'm spending a lot of time interviewing for land use boards because they are a critical function. And this one, this gentleman was actually interviewed by Councilman Maderos. So I am making him, asking, oh, no, I'm making the motion that I will be appointing Sebastian Panietto to replace Tim Gamash as an alternate member for an unexpired term to next month. So I guess we'll see Mr. Panietto back on the list for January. And then my next one is I'm appointing Richard Menestro to replace Dennis Hart as a regular member, and that is an unexpired term to May of 2018. And also to appoint Michael Robinson to replace Tracy Peralta, which was a Section 2-9 resignation, an unexpired term to May of 2020. So those are mayor's appointments. Moving on to Board of Park Commissioners, motion to reappoint Paula O'Keefe for a three-year term to December of 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The next appointment is to appoint Sandra Bogdansky to replace Diane Nacera, who resigned, an unexpired term to December of 2019.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving down to Board of Police Commissioners. It is my pleasure tonight to appoint Terry Lewis to replace Robert Moreau for a three-year term to December of 2020. Did I see him in the audience? Could you just stand and be recognized? Okay. Terry Lewis, member of local community and AAACP and Buella, is currently employed as a supervisor with the State of Connecticut Department of Social Services and a resident of the Second Council District. So welcome, and Police Board meets on Tuesday, so we'll see you there. He's replacing Police Commissioner Moreau, who's moving out of Bristol next month. So you're all set, and we're going to entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. And the second Police Board Commissioner is to appoint former City Council member Anthony Demato to replace his grandfather, Edward Demato Sr., who resigned for an unexpired term until next December. So again, you know, I think this is a sign of the type of community when we have such legacy types of families who contribute over so many years. And I thought I saw Tony. Tony, welcome to the Police Commission, Tony. Okay, was there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay. We are now moving down to Bristol School Readiness to appoint Lisa Demato to replace Catherine Przagaki, who passed away, as the Kith and Provider Member. That is a term that runs through August 2018.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are still waiting for the Housing Authority to hear about their continued state funding. There is a position on school readiness that the Housing Authority has, but that position is in limbo right now, so hopefully we'll be able to take care of that next month. Bristol Transportation Commission to appoint Sean Gingeri to replace Bruno Sazaluski, Citizen-at-Large Member, who resigned. This is an unexpired term to next month, so we'll be doing this again. I'd like to recognize Mr. Gingeri, who's here and has been at a couple of our meetings. He's emailed to myself and Councilman Fortier and has some great ideas about how to really use Fast Track as a catalyst for both economic development and increase its profile here in Bristol. So is there a motion?
I'd make a motion.
Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, congratulations. And Councilman Fortier, if you could just let him know, I know you have a, is it a quarterly schedule?
Yeah, we have sort of a, sort of a quarterly schedule, but we will let you know when we have a meeting.
Board of Water Commissioners, I am making a nomination for the council to consider appointing Kathy Ferrier Gibson to replace John Fitzgerald for a three-year term to December 2020. Some of you may know the name from her days of playing for Gino Ariema, but while she was also at UConn, she earned a Natural Resources Management degree and is currently employed as an arborist for EverSource. So she has great passion for conservation and I think would be a great fit for the Water Commission. So is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then I'd like to ask for a motion to reappoint Robert Bedell for a three-year term to December 2020.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Youth Commission to appoint Deborah All to replace Joan Trafford, a citizen member who has resigned. It is an unexpired term to June of 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. No, because we have an issue there. Zoning Board of Appeals to appoint Rippey Patton to replace Jeffrey Hayden as an alternate member who had resigned. This is an unexpired term to July 2020. And just for, is Rippey still here? So there was some confusion about whether his term had expired or not expired. So he is technically a Section 2-9 right now because he thought he was off the panel. He is now back on the panel. And we still have some land use board vacancies, so if anybody is interested in Zoning Board of Appeals, please call my office so we can discuss them. Now, in order to assist with the assessment effort and the Board of Assessment Appeals, each town committee nominates a member in order to assist.
I'm sorry, can I get a motion for the zoning board of vacancies?
Yes. Motion for Rippey Patton.
For zoning board of appeals.
Second.
No discussion, I'm assuming, are we good? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, Theresa. Okay, so we have two names that have been brought forward by the Republican and Democratic Town Committees to augment the work done by our elected Board of Assessment Appeals. And those names are John Fitzgerald from the Republican Town Committee and Sandra Stafford from the Democratic Town Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Questions? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now, the Memorial Boulevard Inter-District Arts Magnet School had one committee slot left, and tonight we're putting forward the name of Deirdre Tavera to fill that spot.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. The City's Marketing Committee, that has run out of the BDA, asking for a nomination to add Brian Dumelin, who is a social media specialist, to aid that committee.
So moved.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So Charter Revision. All of us here on the panel that you see before you has submitted one name. We had to balance party affiliations, and tonight we have seven people who will be charged with reviewing the Charter Revision process. They are charged with, we're going to send them certain items that are of concern, but it also gives them the opportunity to look at anything in the Charter that they feel might need discussion or study. I would also urge the department heads at any point, if you'd like to review your sections, this would be the time to do it. If there's anything that's in there that you'd like to raise for conceptual discussion or something, you heard the discussion earlier tonight about sidewalks being in our Charter. That is a prime example of something that is probably no longer appropriate. So for the names being put forward, from Councilman Han, we have the name of former City Council Member Craig Minor. From Councilman Mills, we have the name of Attorney John Fitzgerald. From Councilman Proleski, Jack Crampitz, a retired educator. From Councilman Fortier, Lori Scotty, who is a vice president with Lincoln Financial. Josh Maderos is nominating Michelle Rolfe. And Peter Kelly is nominating Hal Kilby. And I am nominating Calvin Brown. Is there a motion to empanel Charter Revision?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Your Honor, is there too many Democrats on the?
No. The one in question has erased affiliation for the balance of her service.
The service, then, if she, if she erased her service and became unaffiliated, she has three months before it takes effect.
Register McCauley told me it was instant.
Or if she was, she was party affiliated? I think.
We can check on that.
Yeah, I think before you approve that. It's erasure, for purposes of election, it's erasure of a party or transfer of a party. For, and that is for appointments to boards. When it comes to actual voting, that's, it's different. But, so from his perspective, it's fine, but I think from purposes of minority representation, it's not.
Okay.
Again, if the person was a Democrat, that they, they have three months before it takes effect from, from, they're no longer a Democrat. It's only, only unaffiliated if they, if they are.
Okay.
Yeah, three months? Thank you.
Okay, so then I think what we should do to be safe is to exclude the name of Lori Scotty from the Charter Revision Panel at this time until we can resolve what her status is in terms of affiliation and maybe possibly need another name. So is that amenable to the rest of the council that will go forward with six members at this time? Okay.
And one other thing, Your Honor, are you going to be creating the board should you have the resolution? Do you have a resolution decree?
Wow. Okay.
Is there anything legal that we have to have in it, other than the fact that it's?
By number or by concept? Okay, so then you know what? Why don't we just hold on this item? Because we do have three conceptual items, and maybe if I give them to you, you can look them up, and we can come back to this at the end of the agenda? Okay. All right. So, well, that was complicated. So we'll come back to Charter Revision. One, two more items. There is a motion that I'd like to ask Councilman Han to bring forward in terms of the task force that we discussed in November for arts and culture.
Yes, in November, we mentioned that the mayor and I went to an event in New Britain to speak with members of their arts council. They had a, an event, a wonderful event with the artists, local artists, and in correlation with the mayor's office. And we had an opportunity to speak with everyone. Since then, a press release was put out requesting people to show their interest in a Mayor's Task Force on the creation of a Arts and Entertainment Mayor's Task Force. So the overwhelming, it was overwhelming how many people we got. We got so many responses that show that the community is very much behind the creation of this organization. So at this point, I would like to make a motion to form an Arts and Entertainment Task Force to explore ways to increase awareness and build partnerships with the arts, entertainment, and tourism areas.
Second. Is there a discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And to complement that motion, we have solicited from the community via newspaper articles and social media those who may be interested. The city clerk and I talked earlier, and because this is going to be a task force committee, we can notify them via email of their appointment and dispense with some of the other tasks associated with board membership at this point. But for the record, I'd like to let everybody know that the following Bristol residents have stepped forward and will be serving in this ad hoc task force, which will determine a focus area and then most likely recommendations for either a commission or following the same path really that the Energy Task Force took over the last two and a half years, but probably on a smaller timeframe. They are Andy Adams, Meredith Adams, Patricia Badoine, Jerry Beveridge, Samantha Cludier, Don Coombs, Susan Kunal, Jack Ferraro, Mary Lynn Gagnon, Ginger Grant, Dave Kozakowski, Carla Lee, Don Ledger, Rochelle Levens, Ashley Ladovica, Tracy Norken, Juliet Norton, Ray Palagi, Jess Petroyka, Gina Raffanello Prentice, Richard Rich, Maria Salis, Doug Sado, Michelle Spalding, James Spinelli, Alan Stone, Scott Stanton, Rich Theriot, Mark Thomas, Melissa Thornton, Jody Tressman, Lindsay Vigu, Brian Wilson, and Denise Zabawa. So I'm going to pass that forward to the city clerk. And that, I believe, concludes our appointment section. Oh, one more thing. The, it was suggested by the city clerk that I also announce, just as we're creating committees and staffing committees, that the Economic Development Committee that was attached to the mayor's Economic Development Fund has now been eliminated because we have merged it with the BDA. So for the record, I just want everybody to note that that committee is no longer in existence. So Theresa, unless there's anything else to correct, we can move on to Agenda Item 11.
Resolution to approve the execution and filing of documents on behalf of the City of Bristol with the Commissioner of DEEP for design and construction grants and loans for the Bristol phosphorus reduction study facility upgrade. And there is a resolution to read, your honor?
Does anybody have the resolution for Agenda Item 11 handy?
I'm slow.
I have that here.
Okay.
Be it hereby resolved that Mayor Ellen Zapposasou is hereby authorized to execute and file all necessary documents on behalf of the City of Bristol with the Commissioner of the Connecticut Department of Environmental Protection for design and construction grants and loans for the project entitled Bristol WPC Phosphorus Reduction Study Facility Upgrade, and to accept payments necessary for receipt of said grants and loans pursuant to the provisions of Section 22A-475 through 483 of the Connecticut General Statutes.
Second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the resolution is a roll call vote, starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion carries.
Item 12, authorization for Mayor Ellen Zapposasou or Acting Mayor to sign any and all agreements with Eversource Energy and Frontier Communications required for installation of public utilities to develop Center Square.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Does anybody have the resolution in front of them?
I don't think it's a resolution.
That's suggested resolution on my copy.
I'll read it. To authorize the Mayor Ellen Zapposasou or Acting Mayor to sign any and all agreements required for the installation of public utilities for, required to develop the Center Square property with Eversource Energy and Frontier Communications.
Theresa, your opinion? Resolution or no resolution?
It really is, they're saying it's a resolution, it's really a motion.
Okay.
But that's fine, you can do it as, if you've done it as a resolution, it's just as good, and you can take a roll call vote.
That's fine.
You're covered both ways.
Is there a discussion of the motion as presented? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item 13, discussion regarding returning Memorial Boulevard School back to the Bristol Board of Education.
Okay. So for those of you who have been involved in this process, you understand that this is pretty much an administrative action in order to continue our application concerning the Arts Magnet School. We do have representatives from the Board of Ed with us, and if the superintendent would like to outline what we're doing here, so our viewing audience will understand.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. As Mayor just pointed out, this is a necessary resolution, or motion, to allow us to take back Memorial Boulevard School, because we cannot qualify for the intra-district magnet school grant if we are not in possession of the school. During that time, and we're not sure whether it will be February or April, when we're hoping that the state will either tell us we're receiving those funds or not, that you will continue to maintain the cost of utilities for the building that you already have in your budget during this time period. And if we do not receive the grant, we will be turning the school back. I think this project, if it is successful, will be a winner for Bristol. It takes a long time for a theater to build a following, and once there's a school there that's active, the theater can continue to grow while the students in there use it as well as the community. And it's my hope that that will become just an amazing gateway to the City of Bristol. Thank you.
So to be clear, this is really just a formality to allow us to apply for the state grant? Okay.
Are there any legal impediments? Corporation council is good with this? We'll take that as a yes. Before we let you vote on it.
But are there time constraints?
Can we vote on it pending your-
There's time constraints.
Yeah. Can you pass it until after the executive session? And then we'll discuss it with the four of us.
Is there anything for them to review, Superintendent Moreau?
Not sure. We just want to make sure that we're crossing the Ts and dotting the Is on that.
Okay, because I know that-
I think the impression was we were just going to have a discussion about it.
No. This is a time sensitive item.
Then I will talk to the corporation council.
Okay, so we're going to postpone item 13?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we postpone item 13 until after the executive session?
That's fine.
Second.
No one will take up the charter too, at the same time.
Okay. Okay. So, so is there a discussion on the motion to postpone? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Opposed? Motion carries. 14.
Resolution to approve entering into memorandum of agreement with State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection regarding Homeland Security Grant Funds for DEMHS Region 3. And there is a resolution to read, your honor?
I have the resolution, does anybody else have the resolution? Okay, Councilman Han.
Be it hereby resolved that the city council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy Services and Public Protection Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security a memorandum of agreement regarding Homeland Security Grant Funds for DEMHS Region 3, including any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And be it further resolved that Ellen Zapposasou, as mayor of the City of Bristol, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the city council of the City of Bristol, Connecticut, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents. The town clerk further certifies that Ellen Zapposasou now holds the office of mayor of the City of Bristol, and that she has held the office since November 13, 2017. Be it further resolved, this matter be referred to the Board of Finance for any necessary action.
Second.
Is there a second? I got a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
I think this is a resolution.
Starting on my far right.
Yes.
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 Chair votes yes. Motion carries. And we've already taken up item- 15. So that brings us to executive sessions to discuss the workers' compensation matters of Terry Boyko versus the City of Bristol, PMA Claim 890941533, and Eileen Salkowitz versus City of Bristol, PMA Claim W910642507. At this point, the council is going to make a motion to go into executive session. We will discuss these matters, and then we will come back out. It is an undetermined amount of time that we will be in there. You are all welcome to stay, or you're welcome to go, because we will be taking up charter revision on the Memorial Boulevard following that.
Correct. Your honor, for the executive session, Attorney Eric Barclay, and Richard Lacy, and I believe the Personnel Director, if she's still here, should be going into that executive session.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. We have Agenda Item 16. Are there any motions to come before the council?
There were no motions taken in executive session, but I do have a motion to bring forward at this time. I hereby move to rescind the stipulation for full and final settlement in the matter of Eileen-
Salkowitz.
Salkowitz versus the City of Bristol and PMA Management Corporation of New England, Claim Number W910642507, in the amount of $128,029.3, voted on August 8, 2017, and to approve the stipulation for full and final settlement in the matter of Eileen Salkowitz
Salkowitz.
Versus the City of Bristol and PMA Management Corporation of New England, Claim Number W910642507, in the amount of $140,000, and to authorize counsel for the City of Bristol to execute any and all necessary documents.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Are there any other motions to come before the council? Okay, hearing none, let's make a motion to return to the Agenda Item Number 13. Discussion regarding returning Memorial Boulevard School back to the Bristol Board of Education.
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So corporation council? Are you ready? Shall I?
Yes.
Okay. Superintendent Moreau, would you like to reclaim the podium?
Surely. Would you like me to once again respectfully request that you return Memorial Boulevard School?
Let's take it right from the top.
To the Board of Education. In order to qualify for the grant that would allow us to revitalize the theater and renovate as new the school building, we need to take possession of the school. We are hoping that decision will be made between February and April of 2018. If we do not receive the grant, we will return Memorial Boulevard School to the city.
Okay, so I think it is important for the record to note that this is an administrative action in order to satisfy the grant requirements. And during this time, that the city is going to maintain the current level of funding for the cost of utilities and other costs for upkeep that the city has in the current budget, that the Board of Education will maintain control until such time as a decision is made on the grant. And if the application is not funded, they're going to return it. So for the record, I want, from the public works perspective, that everybody is aware that we're going to maintain the current level of funding and staffing pertinent to this building.
So you need a motion?
I think we need a motion to-
I move that we-
Transfer.
Transfer.
Transfer the building to the Board of Education, under the same, under the stipulations that were stated.
For the application of an intra-district magnet school grant.
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Until the-
We will know within that time period whether or not we receive the grant.
We will know within this fiscal year. During the fiscal year, we will know. Before June 30, I think, is a safe assumption. Okay. Any other questions? Motion has been made, seconded, we've had some discussion. Any other questions or concerns? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you so much.
Motion carries. Thank you. So we now have, the last item for tonight is the charter revision. So we have now resolved our paperwork, and we have a motion, a resolution, which I'm going to hand to Councilman Fortier.
Be it hereby resolved that pursuant to authority contained in Section 7-187 through 7-190 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the city council of the City of Bristol hereby creates a charter revision commission to consist of seven electors to be nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, provided that no more than one-third of whom may hold any other public office in this city, and not more than a bare majority of whom shall be members of any one political party. Said commission is hereby directed to make its draft report to the appointing authority on or before June 22, 2018, to review the following sections of the city charter. Section 31, Streets and Sidewalks, 35, Sewer Connections, and 48, Water Department, and to make provisions for a new section pertaining to the discipline of elected officials, and to consider any other revisions that may be suggested by the city council.
Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Discussion of the motion as presented?
Mayor, when was the last time the charter was revised, to your knowledge?
Full scale?
Yes.
1969.
Is this going to be a full scale, looking at everything, or just those items we mentioned?
No, we, they have the authority, once seated, to look at anything.
Okay.
So they can come up with their own points to pursue. These are the things that we're requesting of them to take up.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or discussion items?
And just to clarify for the record, the names that we put forward tonight, there's been questions brought up about the-
Bare majority.
The bare majority. And so we're not going to name those names tonight, but we will do so within 30 days. I, I do have one other discussion item. We say here that it's a seven-member board. Could we maybe leave out the word seven in the resolution? And perhaps in order to solve our problem about bear majority, maybe expand it to a board of nine?
That's a big number.
So if we were to have a nine, just for discussion purposes, how many from one party is that?
It's always a bare majority.
So it would be five, which is the five we have now.
Correct.
So if we added two more unaffiliated voters, we could have nine, and keep the names that we brought forward.
So, okay, so we have a motion, and it's been seconded. So now your suggestion is-
Really just to take the word seven out, so that it leaves ourselves open to a couple different ways to solve our problem.
Do we need to- I think you have to create it, knowing how many members you have. When you do the resolution, it's, we have nine members, we have seven members. So tonight, you certainly can say you want to do nine members.
Theresa, we love you, but you know too much. I've been through too many charter revisions, believe me.
Do any of us have an extra friend that's an unaffiliated voter? Can we possibly find two more people? I think it's not an unsurmountable issue.
Could also be minor party.
We have Green Party, we have Libertarian.
I suspect we could fill two more spots on the board.
Okay. They also can be Republican. It's just, the maximum is a bare majority of one party.
Okay. So, so we can go with a nine member. Do we need to withdraw the original motion, or can we just amend it?
All right, I would make a motion to withdraw the motion, or the resolution that I just made.
Are you the second?
I'll withdraw the second.
Our councilman Mills was the second.
Okay. And now I make a new resolution, or do we have to vote on?
We have to vote on, do we have to vote on a withdrawal?
Yeah, to withdraw the motion, yeah, because did you, well, no, actually, you didn't.
I don't think we voted.
You didn't vote on, yeah.
So we just withdrew.
You didn't vote on.
So now I'm making a new resolution. Be it hereby resolved that pursuant to authority contained in Section 7-187 through 7-190 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the city council of the City of Bristol hereby creates a charter revision commission to consist of nine electors to be nominated by the mayor and confirmed by the city council, provided that no more than one-third of whom may hold any other public office in this city, and not more than a bare majority of whom shall be members of any one political party. Said commission is hereby directed to make its draft report to the appointing authority on or before June 22, 2018, to review the following sections of the city charter. 31, Streets and Sidewalks, 35, Sewers, Sewer Connections, and 48, Water Department, and to make provisions for a new section pertaining to the discipline of elected officials, and to consider any other revisions that may be suggested by the city council.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Jesus. Starting on my far left.
Yes.
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 Hell, yes. We are done. Okay.
And then one final clarification about Heather Woodbury?
Oh, yes.
She, she already is appointed to the board. There is a position still open, and that is the one from Melissa Zukowski. So there is an open position on that board. But Heather, Heather replaced Sam Alkus. So, yeah.
Okay. Or October. Whatever. September. Okay. All right, so the good news is she's impaneled. We still have a vacancy, and we do have interest, so we can resolve that in the future.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.